Okay, thank you everybody for joining us. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees to order today February 24th at 7:35 PM. Could we have the roll please?
Yes. Testing.
I know who you mean, I'm here.
Trustee Clark.
I'm still here.
Trustee Cullen?
Here.
I can't get the mic to stay down. Just won't stay down.
Your mic is fine.
Okay. It won't stay down.
Oh.
Here.
Trustee Davis-Forey is absent. Trustee Levinson?
Present.
Trustee Rosner?
Here.
Trustee Schnall?
Here.
Village President Torfee?
Here.
Also in attendance, Gary Lewis, Village Administrator, Stephen Rother, Village Counsel, Adam Lerner, Deputy Village Administrator, myself, Chanel Smith. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in the Village Hall on the Village's website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken.
Thank you. We have one resolution to begin the meeting tonight to go into executive session.
Resolution 201446, "Resolution Authorizing Executive Session at the February 24th, 2014 Meeting of the Board of Trustees."
Thank you. The three items to be discussed in executive session tonight. One is rescue squad, Maplewood Mutual Aid Shared Service, which is contract negotiations, attorney-client privilege; volunteer applications, which is personnel; and Joe Baumann, which is contract negotiations and attorney-client privilege. Got motion?
I move.
Moved by trustee Cullen, seconded by trustee Levinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Thank you, we'll be back at 8 o'clock.
Okay, thank you everybody for joining us. We have a very special Board of Trustees meeting tonight. As you notice, I have not opened the meeting up officially because we have a very special guest who will be doing that tonight for us. Our honorary Village President, Gunjan Jacinto, will be joining us in just a second. And she will not only be presiding over our meeting tonight, she will also be stealing my title of youngest Village President ever, which I'm glad to relinquish. So at the time, I would like to welcome our honorary Village President for the night.
Do you think you need to bring that mic closer?
Yep. You're right.
See, it takes a woman to get it right.
I'd like to think, I would like to call this regular meeting of the South Orange Board of Trustees to order. Today, February 24th, 2014, at 8 o'clock PM. May I have the roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Roll call. Trustee Clark?
Here.
Trustee Colin?
Here.
Trustee Davis Ward?
Absolutely here.
Trustee Levison?
Present.
Trustee Rosner?
Here.
Trustee Schnell?
Very happy to be here.
Village President Turpys?
Here.
And Village President for the day?
Here.
Jacinto. Also present, Barry Lewis, Village Administrator, Steven Rother, Village Counsel, Adam Lerner, Deputy Village Administrator, myself, Chanel Smith.
Please rise for the Pledge Allegiance in the moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. You may be seated. We have one resolution for separate action to begin the meeting tonight. May I have the resolution read by title, please?
Yes, you may. Resolution 2014-47, a resolution hiring a part-time clerk typist in the South Orange Police Department.
This is a resolution to hire one part-time clerk typist to fill- This is a resolution to hire one part-time clerk typist to fill a vacancy for this position in the South Orange Police Department.
I move the resolution.
I second it.
Unless there are any questions, may I please have a motion?
Moved by Trustee Collin, seconded by Trustee Davis Ford. Roll call.
May I have a second?
And I second it.
Okay.
Thank you. Motion is seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Collin?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Resolution 2014-47 has been approved by the Board of Trustees.
Pass your first resolution. Congratulations.
I am honored to be the first South Orange honorary Village President. I would like to thank my parents, brother, friends, neighbors, and teachers for supporting me. I would also like to thank Village President Alex Torpe for starting this program. I hope this program will be a big success. I hope all the other kids after me will enjoy it and learn about local government. Thank you.
We have Gunjan's teacher here tonight and wants to say a few words also.
So I want to start by saying thank you very much for having us all, all of us, here today. This year, as I started planning our unit for government, I reached out to Alex Torpe to help us. It's important for third graders to, it's important for us to teach third graders about government and have them read about it and research about it. But that's only the beginning of their learning. In order for them to truly engage in it and internalize the information, it needed to be real to them. It needed to be something they could relate to in their own lives. Alex helped us to accomplish this goal, but we never dreamed it would go this far. We spent a great deal of time in our classroom building community, and we hoped that Alex would help us learn about local government and community. But he taught us so much more than that. He taught us to take responsibility for our government and regardless of age, learn to take on leadership roles within our community. We were also in the middle of a unit in persuasive writing at the time. The students had learned that their words mattered and that they could bring about change. They wrote speeches to convince others of their opinions and to take on a cause that they felt strongly about. When Alex came to visit us, he helped us to teach our students that their words mattered, that he made his words become real changes in this community. He made our students' words matter so much that their words, and specifically the words of one student, inspired him to create a whole new program. We are so thrilled that Gunjan Jacinto was to be, was able to be the inspiration and the first recipient of this honor. She's a child who continues to inspire us through her thoughtfulness and insights every day. Our class wants to thank you, Alex. It's been a great honor for our whole class to be a part of all of this. You've inspired so many children with your visit to our school, your honest insights into your journey, and what motivates you. We hope you'll come back and inspire us again next year. I hope that this program continues to inspire other students as much as it has our whole class, most of which are here with us tonight. My own child emailed the mayor in our town to ask him if he'd be interested in starting a program like this. Thank you so much for making our words matter.
Thank you so much. I know Gunjan's parents are here too. Do either of them want to say anything?
Mrs. Daddy.
Not to put you guys on the spot too much.
This was not in the script, but thank you, Village President Alex and honorary Village President Gunjan Jacinto. As father of the Village President, I'd just like to say thank you to Alex again.
Oh, just, no, go ahead, that's fine.
I think this is a really great idea, and I hope it's a roaring success. It's going to go a long way, I think, in achieving one of your goals that I know you talked to me about, which is encouraging young kids to be, to understand local government and understand what that really is, and, you know, understand it firsthand. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I think, I think I may have to have you come to more of the meetings. I've never had a resolution pass that easily with this board. So, I'm going to have to talk to you and get some tips. Is that okay? And I do have a proclamation here also from all of us, but before I do read that and also give any of the trustees who want to say a few words, I just want to thank you, Gunjan, for doing this and for doing such a great job. And also just to reiterate for all the kids that are here and watching, the importance of learning about how things work and getting involved and trying to do everything you can to be part of that process of making things better. Sometimes things can seem really far away and they can seem impossible, and they can seem like things that maybe you're not supposed to be a part of, but this is, you know, especially in your town, you know, this local government is for all of you. And so it's great to see people out at the meeting, and it's great to see people involved and engaged. You know, I know that's really exciting for all of us. And so I just wanted to thank not only all the students for participating and being so interested in this. I was amazed going into these classes, I have to say. This is a credit both to our students and our teachers, but I was amazed at the level of knowledge that the students had when I went in and spoke to them and asked them questions about local government and government at all different levels. And was very surprised and excited to see people firing the answers right back and what the different three branches do and what the powers of the president are, all these different things. And now learning about our own local government is another piece to bite off. That's a pretty long history that's very unique there. But it's been, it's been really great to see people get so interested. And I know for me, you know, I appreciate the opportunity of being able to go in and provide something exciting for the students, but just like has been said, it was an inspiration for me too, you know, in doing this program and, and I mentioned this to a few people beforehand, but a few other mayors and other towns have actually reached out since posting about this on Facebook, and they're interested in starting the same program in their community. And it all started because I was invited to speak to the classes by our wonderful public school teachers. And Mrs. Feinberg, thank you for that and for, for reaching out and making us part of your process. So hopefully this is something that won't end here tonight. This is definitely a program that we're going to continue here in South Orange, maybe even in Maplewood, Victor Luca, we'll see. And hopefully in other towns across the state and across the country too, is find more ways to just get young people interested in what's going on. And you've set a very high bar. Everyone else after you is going to have to do as good as you did tonight. That's going to be very difficult, but congratulations.
I just want to say, this is a wonderful program. I'm so excited, and congratulations to you, young lady. And of course, you cannot really understand how this will resonate with you the rest of your life because you brought me back to my childhood because in the, in grammar school, I was treasurer of the student council. So I didn't know I was preparing for this. And in high school, I also, again, treasurer of the student council in high school. So you may be president, President of the United States sometime in your future because it all started here, President Torpe, with your initiative, with her running the meeting tonight.
I'll be very happy to...
Everyone here, this may be our future President of the United States. Congratulations for a job well done.
I just want to see how her parents enforce bedtime now that she's been...
I want to offer my congratulations as well, and I also had the same thoughts of going back and thinking in my past, what singular events might have shaped my future. And you never know what those moments might be to, to be a Kickstarter for your future and, and those of us who are, who are watching this. So congratulations for your taking this opportunity, for obviously being a very good student. Your peers and your, your school obviously think highly of you, and we're very proud of you.
So I'm going to read our official proclamation here, which you can take home. So whereas in December 2013, Village President Alex Torpe was a guest speaker at Ms. Feinberg's third grade class at South Mountain Elementary School, and whereas third grade student Gunjan Jacinto expressed a keen interest in Village President Torpe's presentation with a strong curiosity in the role and the position of Village President. Whereas Village President is an avid supporter of educating students interested in municipal and local government by sharing experiences as well as providing opportunity for hands-on participation. And whereas because of Gunjan's interest and the curiosity and engagement of all the students, we've created the Village President for a Day program in South Orange where one student per month will be selected from the South Orange Maplewood School District to participate in the activities conducted by the Village President. And whereas Gunjan Jacinto will be and is now the first Village President for a day, therefore be proclaimed by the Village President of the Township of South Orange Village, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the entire village, our sincerest congratulations extended to you for your commendable endeavor as the honor, as the first honorary Village President for a day. Congratulations. So now what I'd love to do is just ask the Board for a motion just to take a 10-minute recess.
Okay. I move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, we'll be back in 10 minutes. One last time. There you go. There you go. I would like to bring this meeting back from recess and go straight into a couple of quick announcements before we move on for the rest of the meeting. The first is just another announcement. There was a nice article, I think, in the news record recently about public stuff, but just another reminder about it. We're getting more people signed up, we're getting more submissions, getting some good feedback. If you haven't checked it out yet, if you have an Android smartphone, you can go to the Google Play Store, download SO Connect. If you have an iPhone, you can go to the iTunes Store. From the app, you can report potholes, lights out. We especially like people reporting gas lamps out because we want to get a better handle on those. And any other kind of issue you see around town, a non-emergency issue, you can report directly with the app and it will go to our, it will get routed to the correct department and we can take care of it from there. So please, everybody, try and use that. We're trying to do as much through there as possible. If you don't have a smartphone, you can go on our website and do it from southorange.org/311. And if you don't have a computer, you can also call into Village Hall and this system actually allows our employees to input the information into the same system so it still keeps it efficient. Container Day dates, it's from 8:00 a.m., on each of the Saturdays, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:30. Make sure you bring a form of ID for residents only, no commercial vehicles. And those dates are April 26th, May 17th, June 21st, July 26th, August 23rd, and September 27th. If you have any questions about that, you can call our Public Works Department at (973) 378-7741. We still have a couple volunteer positions open on a couple different committees, so if folks are interested in finding a way to get involved, you can visit our website at southorange.org. The volunteering link is on the left-hand navigation column and you can find out which committees are available, what you're interested in. And if you have any questions about that or if you don't see what you'd like to get involved, then please reach out to us and we'll try and find a way to get you involved. One more announcement about Jaffa-Lotree Service. I don't know if we have a date yet about when they will be doing this until...
To the Chair. I did call and there's no set date yet as far as...
So they're just basically going until they...
It may go on to, go on for a few months at this time.
Okay. So again, just one more reminder about it. They will be out doing work in folks' yards and around streets in town. If they miss your house, they'll leave something. There's nothing that you have to do to get them to come out. But again, if you do, if they do miss you and they put the tag on the door, make sure to follow up with them so they can get out there. I also want to announce the Civic Engagement Institute dates. I think we're probably going to hear a little more about this too in a little bit, so I'll let you guys do the real explanation. But the Community Coalition on Race's Civic Engagement Institute, it's a four-week workshop held at our public library on 65 Scotland Road. It's from 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 every Saturday, on March 15th, March 22nd, March 9th, and April 5th. These are free and open to any South Orange Maplewood resident. And again, I will let the folks from the Community Coalition on Race talk about that a little bit more in a moment, but if you do want to apply, you can go to two towns.org or call them at (973) 761-6116. We have one proclamation this evening and it's something I think all of us are very excited to be able to present. We're all extremely happy about what got us up to the point where we'd be presenting a proclamation for this. And Trustee Davis Ford, as Chair of the Legal and Personnel Committee, has been very involved in this from the beginning, so I'm just going to pass it over to her for a moment to thank our honoree.
Well, it is my pleasure on behalf of the committee and the board to be able to present this proclamation to Kathy Reddick. And just to share with you some of the things that we have benefited from her consulting and working with our professional development for our village employees. And it was facilitated via grant funds received through the Stevens Healthcare Education Partnership of Stevens Institute of Technology and the State of New Jersey Workforce Initiative. I would like to take this moment to also say thank you to Adam Lerner for finding the grant and being able to bring this grant to the village so that this professional development could be, benefit our employees at no cost to the village. And connection was made through Dr. Lombardi who offered a series of leadership management to be administered by his longtime and well-established colleague, Dr. Kathleen Reddick. Dr. Kathleen is, Reddick, is a professor and a former director of the graduate program and management at the College of St. Elizabeth, whose area of teaching expertise include leadership, management, human resources management, healthcare management, organizational change and development, training and development. So here are some of the training that took place for the employees of the village to better serve the residents of South Orange. They were customer service and telephone skills, and that involved all employees. And that training was held on December 10, 2013, two sessions. Performance management, department heads only. And that was held on January 16, and that was one session. And the real importance of this performance management, it was very timely because of the, our committee, the Personnel and Legal Committee, had been working on revitalizing a template that was comprehensive on assessing the performance of each village employee for a given year and also included identifying areas of challenge and also setting goals for additional development and to enhance performance and to benefit the residents of South Orange. So this performance management session was training for the department heads to understand how to use that tool. Our conflict resolution and high-quality connections. All employees participated in this training in two sessions on January 17. Managing a diverse workforce, all employees. That was February 11, 2014, and it was two sessions. And we thought that all employees needed to be involved in that in this particular workshop because all you have to do is look at the great mosaic of South Orange and understanding and valuing differences and how so many things are similar and learning to better work together, understanding a diverse workforce. Essentials in leadership and management, this involve department heads and assistant deputies. We thought that not only should department heads benefit from this training, but the second in line because they're being groomed to move up when the department heads move on or if the department head is absent for any given reason. And this was held Friday, February 24, 2014. I can tell you, and this is the feedback that we received from our employees who participated in this training, not many initially were very, very interested or excited about attending training sessions because I have and I'm sure you have been involved when a trainer or consultant would come in and it took all your willpower just to stay focused and forget about being engaged. Well, our trainer, Dr. Reddick, not only was very informative, but she was so skilled in keeping, no matter where an individual was as far as education, ability, skill, was able to get not only their, and keep and maintain their interests, but to get them engaged. And that really is indicative of her skill and experience and also showing that this exercise and training was truly beneficial for all. So with that said, I would like to end with a whereas, or therefore it be it proclaimed by the village president of the township of South Orange Village, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the entire village of South Orange, that sincerest appreciation is hereby extended to Dr. Kathleen Reddick and her colleagues from the Stevens Healthcare Educational Partnership for lending their expertise in human resource management as well as sharing their professional accomplishments with all village personnel. Presented the 24th day of February 2014.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you.
Yeah, you too.
Can I stand with you with this one?
I'd like to stand with you with this one.
All right.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you.
Yeah, you too.
Can I stand with you with this one?
Can I stand with you with this one?
I'd like to stand with you with this one.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you.
Yeah, you too.
Can I stand with you with this one?
Can I stand with you with this one?
I'd like to stand with you with this one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, first I'd like to thank you very much because this is quite an honor for me. And also, I'd just like to say to the residents, those of you there tonight, answer to the trustees, that it's really difficult to describe the, as a trainer, I see a lot of people. I probably did 100 trainings over the last year alone. Your people were there in spirit and in mind and in heart and they were there for everyone. And we did a series, so some people came, three or four or five of them, and I had the same engagement on the last day as I did on the first day. You don't ever see that. So I think you should be very proud of the people that work for the village because they really are very dedicated to doing their job very well. Plus, you're all so nice to me. So thank you so much. This is quite an honor.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to invite the Community Coalition on Race to come up and walk us through your presentation, please.
Good evening, President Torpey, members of the Board. We're here basically tonight to keep a promise to you, to come back and talk about the task force reports that we completed. And they are, of course, as you know, arose out of a forum we did last spring where we asked the public to inform us as to where, what areas we could improve, what additional programs we could have, what they'd like to see changed, what they'd like to see stay the same. And we distilled those down into, I need a clicker. You got it? You can click it. It's okay. Which one?
Just...
Hopefully it works.
There. We distilled the comments that we received at that forum basically down into these five areas. And we had five task forces work on these areas over the, over a period of many months. We've given you reports on the first four. Five is not ready for, the last one is not ready for prime time yet, but you'll be getting that shortly. And as I say, I think you've gotten, all gotten copies of these reports. What this is not tonight is a budget presentation. If that's something that you want us to come back and do with respect to the proposal we made, we're certainly willing to do that. But on that, by the way, I'd like to bring us back to a year ago when we were here for purposes of the budget. And you made the comment, and it was Village President Torpey who first said it, and I think Mr. Trustee Rosner also mentioned it, that this, of course, is very much like a shared service with Maplewood. And that it would be a great idea if there was some communication early in the process with Maplewood. My suggestion would be that you might decide what you think an appropriate level of funding is and come up with a formula as to how you would divide that up. And that formula might or might not be a permanent number or equation, but something like that seems to me would make a lot of sense. So you've, you've got these reports. And what I want to, what I want to emphasize about them is that they're really just directional. They're not, they're not detailed programs. They're pretty good, they're pretty informative, but they haven't got all the meat yet. And that's, that's an ongoing process. We have, on the coalition, we have a chair and five vice chairs. They, there will be two of those number assigned at least to each of these areas to develop committee, to put together committees, formed of trustees and other volunteers to work on this and come up with some more detailed programs going forward. And we'll keep you apprised of that, too. But what I'd like to do tonight in very short order is to emphasize some aspects of these task force reports, which I think are important based upon what we said, we said to you about them before and how they relate to that forum, which was very informative for us. For example, the first one, improving communications. There are things here that I think are very meaningful. One of the goals that you have, you've seen in this report is that we want to improve communications with members of the public who don't know much about the coalition and its body of work that we need. And we want to be more engaged with them and get more ideas from them.
Setting goals for additional development and to enhance performance and to benefit the residents of South Orange. So this performance management session was training for the department heads to understand how to use that tool. Our conflict resolution and high-quality connections. All employees participated in this training in two sessions on January 17th. Managing a diverse workforce, all employees. That was February the 11th, 2014, and it was two sessions. And we thought that all employees needed to be involved in that in this particular workshop because all you have to do is look at the great mosaic of South Orange and understanding and valuing differences and how so many things are similar and learning to better work together, understanding a diverse workforce. Essentials in leadership and management. This involve department heads and assistant deputies. We thought that not only should department heads benefit from this training, but the second in line because they're being groomed to move up when the department heads move on or if the department head is absent for any given reason. And this was held Friday, February the 24th, 2014. I can tell you, and this is the feedback that we received from our employees who participated in this training, not many initially were very, very interested or excited about attending training sessions because I have, and I'm sure you have, been involved when a trainer or consultant would come in and it took all your willpower just to stay focused and forget about being engaged. Well, our trainer, Dr. Reddick, not only was very informative, but she was so skilled in no matter where an individual was as far as education, ability, skill, was able to get not only their and keep and maintain their interests, but to get them engaged. And that really is indicative of her skill and experience and also showing that this exercise and training was truly beneficial for all. So with that said, I would like to end with a whereas or therefore it be it proclaimed by the village, president of the township of South Orange Village, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the entire Village of South Orange, that sincerest appreciation is hereby extended to Dr. Catherine Reddick and her colleagues from the Stevens Healthcare Educational Partnership for lending their expertise in human resource management as well as sharing their professional accomplishments with all village personnel. Presented the 24th day of February 2014.
Thank you.
Can I stand with you with this one? I'd like to stand with you with this one.
First, I'd like to thank you very much because this is quite an honor for me. And also, I'd just like to say to the residents, those of you there tonight, answer to the trustees, that it's really difficult to describe the, as a trainer, I see a lot of people. I probably did 100 trainings over the last year alone. Your people were there in spirit and in mind and in heart, and they were there for everyone. And we did a series, so some people came to three or four or five of them, and I had the same engagement on the last day as I did on the first day. You don't ever see that. So I think you should be very proud of the people that work for the village because they really are very dedicated to doing their job very well. Plus, you're all so nice to me. So, thank you so much. This is quite an honor.
Thank you. (applause) Okay, at this point, I'd like to invite the community coalition and race to come up and walk us through your presentation, please.
Good evening, President Torpey, members of the board. We're here basically tonight to keep a promise to you to come back and talk about the task force reports that we completed. And they are, of course, as you know, arose out of a forum we did last spring where we asked the public to inform us as to where, what areas we could improve, what additional programs we could have, what they'd like to see changed, what they'd like to see stay the same. And we distilled those down into, I need a clicker. You got it? You can click it. It's okay. Which one?
Just look.
Hopefully it works. There.
We distilled the comments that we received at that forum basically down into these five areas. And we had five task forces work on these areas over a period of many months. We've given you reports on the first four. Five is not ready for, the last one is not ready for prime time yet, but you'll be getting that shortly. And as I say, I think you've gotten, all gotten copies of these reports. What this is not tonight is a budget presentation. If that's something that you want us to come back and do with respect to the proposal we made, we're certainly willing to do that. But on that, by the way, I'd like to bring us back to a year ago when we were here for purposes of the budget. And you made the comment, and it was Village President Torpey who first said it, and I think Mr. Trustee Rosner also mentioned it, that this, of course, is very much like a shared service with Maplewood. And that it would be a great idea if there was some communication early in the process with Maplewood. My suggestion would be that you might decide what you think an appropriate level of funding is and come up with a formula as to how you would divide that up. And that formula might or might not be a permanent number or equation, but something like that seems to me would make a lot of sense. So you've got these reports, and what I want to emphasize about them is that they're really just directional. They're not detailed programs. They're pretty good. They're pretty informative, but they haven't got all the meat yet. And that's an ongoing process. On the coalition, we have a chair and five vice chairs. There will be two of those number assigned, at least two, to each of these areas to develop committee, to put together committees, formed of trustees and other volunteers to work on this and come up with some more detailed programs going forward. And we'll keep you apprised of that, too. But what I'd like to do tonight in very short order is to emphasize some aspects of these task force reports which I think are important based upon what we said, we said to you about them before, and how they relate to that forum, which was very informative for us. For example, the first one, improving communications. There are things here that I think are very meaningful. One of the goals that you have, you've seen in this report is that we want to improve communications with members of the public who don't know much about the coalition and its body of work that we need. And we want to be more engaged with them and get more ideas from them. In addition, we want to work and communicate with members of the public who don't particularly support the coalition mission or its body of work. We want to have a discussion with them about why that's so and what they would like to see changed or improved upon. Another objective would be to, and this was an interesting comment that the public made, make sure you deliver messages that don't alienate the people that the coalition is trying to inform about the value of integration, diversity, and inclusion. And make sure that we connect with newer residents in the community who are here for less than five years. Sometimes it's easy to just keep talking to the same people and not realize that the population is constantly turning over. You have to constantly make new connections. I think it's important to emphasize that we're going to develop trustees' mutual understanding of what constitutes prohibited political activity statements or positions that's defined by law and other considerations. And another, just as a program in effect, we'd like to see if we can get a situation where we, where the coalition, once a month, is at an area in Maplewood and South Orange, like in front of the post office or someplace where the public congregates so that we would have a table. Maplewood Township Committee does that once a month. We can also do it with the coalition. That's sort of the model that we had in mind. On youth engagement, I think the important thing that, from my perspective, one of the most important things that came out of this task force is that we want to be engaged with youth and learn from youth, what they think about racial issues and what they could suggest about programs and ways that those can be dealt with. We thought we would start with a forum or a focus group of Columbia High School students in the early spring and to get their perspectives. And the long-term goal would be to establish a regular flow of input from young people living in the two towns that would inform the coalition. Task force, the one on conflict resolution is the next one up there. That grew out of the comment at that forum that there were some times when issues came up involving race and where was the coalition? Where were you? How were you? Why were you not part of this dialogue or whatever was going on at the time? Well, so, we took that seriously. And of course, this one, as I think we talked about before, required us to walk a fine line because one of the other possible criticisms is you're being political. You want to be involved, you want to be helpful, but you don't want to be political. So the fine line here is really to be a facilitator. So what we have in mind here is providing a venue or a space where people can come and talk about issues, disputes they might have. This could be private people, it could be public institutions, it could be public-private disputes. And what we would do is have a space where people could come together. In addition to that, if that facilitation didn't produce results, we would, you have a list of conflict resolution folks and mediators which we could present to people and say, here, you can pick from this list. And these would be people whom we have vetted and feel that they are appropriate for the task. The other thing we could do is discuss with them what, if this went all the way to litigation, what that would mean. So the realities of that as compared to mediation could be something that we could helpfully comment on. So that's the template for this effort. And I might say that if you want to measure this in terms of success or what the metrics would be, I suggest to you that the real market success is that we wouldn't do anything at all because the community would be so cooperative that there wouldn't, the conflicts wouldn't arise. So that would sort of measure the rest, the success of the rest of our effort. The task force on focus on all races. Okay, so that, what came out of the forum was a question. Should the coalition be focusing on essentially black-white relationships? And the answer to that, our task force recommended and the Board of Trustees approved, the answer is no. Should not be. Should be broader than that. Now, the interesting thing is that as far back as 2008 in our mission statement, it actually says that we should be focusing on all races. So it isn't that we hadn't thought about this before, but the fact of the matter is the urgency, certainly in the early years, of the black-white issues was such that we never did get around to that in a really substantive way. But that's going to change. And it'll change early. I mean, the first thing that will happen is that we will have an international festival in the park, one of the parks, which will showcase our wide range of diversity in culture, in food, in dress, and so forth. And we hope to draw a regional audience to that. That will showcase how we feel about these things. And we would hope that as a result of that, that will attract people of a variety of backgrounds to our community. But in addition to that, there will be an affirmative marketing effort made to attract, for example, Latinos, Asians, other people of different racial and ethnic groups. So that is going to be expanding, even though it's been the official policy for a while, it's going to be expanding in practice. So those are the highlights of the reports that I wanted to bring to your attention. Nancy and Audrey are here to tell you about other programs that you can expect in 2014. Before I get to that, do you have any specific questions about any of the reports? Yes, Mrs. Schnell?
Yes, thanks for the presentation. And I think aspirationally, it's excellent. I have a question for the conflict resolution, which seems to me, again, aspirationally terrific, hard to do. So the question would be, in the case you talked about mediation, in the case of a potential conflict, is that to say that the folks that you've vetted would be consistent in their way of thinking? I mean, how does the coalition sort of have a view or would they discuss it? So coming to an event where multiple parties were discussing it, would it depend on who was being selected or is there a consistent point of view on various issues?
We wouldn't be picking, we wouldn't be vetting mediators, conflict resolvers, from the standpoint of their ideology or point of view, if you will, on racial matters. It would simply be based on fairness and whether we think that they've accomplished good results in a wide range of things. It could be a commercial dispute, it could be a dispute about how high somebody's fence ought to be. You know, those kinds of things would inform us as to how, now, if they've got specific experience in field of ethnic racial conflict, so much the better. But no, we're not looking for an ideological point of view. Am I answering your question, is that?
Yeah, I was concerned about the ideological point of view. The other one is, is it to be positioned in the case of a crisis? Not just a, would it be, is the coalition trying to put themselves in a position where if something horrible happens in the community, or it could be wider than our community that is causing divide, is the coalition prepared to sort of step into that and sort of say, all right, you know, we're going to help facilitate and have the conversation?
Well, the coalition is not going to, is not going to be, is not going to be an intervenor. In other words, we would be called in. Somebody would say, well, this looks like a job for the coalition. But we're not going to say, okay, that's, you know, we're coming in. Watch out. Here we are. That wouldn't go over. We have to be, it seems to us, careful of intrusion, but exquisitely fair and competent in order to provide the kind of help that can make a difference.
Quick question. Is that on? There we go. One of the things that you mentioned was an international heritage festival. Just to put a bug in your ear, one of the things that the board has been talking about is an event for Irvington Avenue. And if you're familiar with Irvington Avenue, we've got some great foodie destinations over there right now. And we're having our first advisory committee meeting on Wednesday. And I mean, just the food is outstanding. So the idea of perhaps maybe exploring, bringing an event, kind of, you know, matching the minds of what you have with the culture and the education and also mixing it with kind of a gem in South Orange that people don't know about, could be something really, really exciting. So just want to put it on your radar that we're looking for something for the summer that kind of celebrates that corridor that a lot of people don't know about. And I think there might be a happy marriage somewhere in there.
Good idea. We'll certainly look into that.
Thank you.
Thanks for the idea. Okay. If there's nothing else, Nancy?
Good evening. Nancy and I are going to quickly run through kind of a preview for 2014 so that you and also South Orange residents will have some idea of what to anticipate in the coming year. As the slide shows there, we're going to continue with some of our successes in the past and add the new cultural heritage festival that we spoke of just a minute ago. The Martin Luther King Junior Celebration, we will continue for 2015. And as usual, we try to rotate that event between Maplewood and South Orange. The most recent event was held here in South Orange. The challenge we have is a venue in that we had close to 600 people at the last event. So trying to find a place in Maplewood that can accommodate that number is going to be a challenge, but that's a good problem to have. The next item that we're going to continue in 2014, Nancy's going to talk about.
Thank you. And you can see the picture that's on the screen for those of you who are at home and hear is Voices in Harmony Choir singing at the Martin Luther King event in 2014. And it was quite a large group this year. The Schools Committee last year held a cultural competency workshop for the community in 2014. Well, there was, last year, there was an expressed interest in having a second session. So this year, the committee is bringing in a professional in cultural competency training to serve both teachers and residents. So there will be a session directed just toward teachers in the afternoon, a professional development session, and a follow-up, second community-focused session for residents. The second picture is last year's cultural competency. We had kids from Columbia High School there enacting scenes, things that they face that are cultural barriers that they face with their teachers. This isn't all about teachers, but in that case, that particular scene was. Fred already spoke briefly about the Cultural Heritage Festival. It is scheduled for June. It will, I think, will most likely be this year in Memorial Park. We definitely want to move the venue as we, you know, find our level of success this year. And as Trustee Cullen said, we would like to include as many of the restaurants and different groups that are represented in the community. If there's, you know, a group that represents Irvington Avenue overall, we'd like to have them there with a, you know, a booth where they can give out information, promote the restaurants, and hopefully some of the restaurants will come and participate in the food aspect of this celebration.
A final note on that Cultural Heritage Festival is the date is June the 14th for your planning purposes. We've already secured the park. And the thinking is that we'll not only have activities and foods that represent a wide range of ethnicities and cultures here, but we're also going to use money from the vendors to help offset the cost of the entire event.
So it sounds like you already have identified a location?
Yes.
And what location is that?
It's Memorial Park in Maplewood on June the 14th.
Okay.
The next item we wanted to share with you is, oh, let me do that. There we go. Thank you. We're going to continue this year with integration through the arts. And this is nothing new to many of you who've been involved with us in the past. It's a way of bringing residents together to help start them from a place of comfort and commonality to move toward building a relationship. This year, we have two projects that we're working on. One is coming up in March, on Saturday, March the 22nd, is actually going to be in this space on this stage. We're having a children's production and we're going to do a two-part production. One, Dr. Seuss, who is a perfect source to help teach the message of inclusion, which is part of our mission. And the second is going to be a Czech opera called Rizalka, which is a version of The Little Mermaid. So we're already starting to widely publicize this to encourage our young people and young families, we say, from 4 to 94, would be able to enjoy this here in this space. And we've been working very closely with SoPAC to be able to make that happen. The other project is going to be a community-wide project for residents of both Maplewood and South Orange. It's going to be an arts project that brings neighbors together to create artistic doors. Doors are symbolic of transformation and openings, and they also will be decorated using different art forms and will have professional artists, local artists, who will be helping residents build their skills there. Our plan is to complete the project in April and May and share with the community the outputs at the Artist Studio Tour in June, that first Sunday in June. And then Nancy's going to talk a little bit about the other projects.
I just want to point out that the picture up there, if you don't know Lori Miraball, she's an incredible opera singer. She has performed in most of our music productions in the past few years. And if you have the opportunity to be here in this space on March 22nd this year, if you have kids, bring them, even if you don't have kids, come because it's really quite a treat to hear her sing. And there will be other professionals there as well. Conversations on Race. This is an annual event. This year, it will be in May, it usually is. The topic will be on understanding our collective biases, which include the concepts of stereotyping and implicit bias. We heard, we hear loud and clear all the time, but we definitely heard it at last year's Conversations on Race. People really want the opportunity to come together and talk about things that are on their minds related to race in small groups. This year, it's a deep topic. We will be bringing in somebody from the outside, some professional, to lead us in the group conversation. It may be one speaker, possibly a panel, we haven't worked that out yet, but that will absolutely be followed by small facilitated table discussions, which is where people feel like they get the most benefit. On that note, we'll be following that in the fall with Coalition Month Community Discussion. In 2013, we were fortunate to get a grant from the New Jersey Council on the Humanities. We showed the documentary Freedom Riders. It was the basis for a great community discussion. We had about 60 people there. We hope to do something similar in 2014. We're looking into, quite a few years ago, we did Two Towns, One Book. We may be following that model again in 2014, getting people to read and come together and have these small group discussions. Are you doing preschool?
Yes, I am. And directing you to the screen, the other photo that you see there is a photo of a gentleman and his little one. He was one of 50-plus families who attended our preschool open house last year. We intend to continue that this year and to invite the 20-plus agencies in the area who can provide childcare, preschool service for our residents. What we are doing differently this year is we're looking to optimize it for the young families. We typically have had it on a weeknight at the high school, and we're looking into how we can make it more accessible, perhaps having it on the weekend, a different day, a different time, so that more families can come out and actually take advantage of that service.
I hope most of you by now have seen the virtual video tour on our website. We're in the process of getting it to you for the South Orange Township website and Maplewood. It's on a few other places as well, some Realtors who have taken it up. The tour has been up and running since last fall, since September, and we've had about 4,000 viewers. The marketing committee is looking for more opportunities to place the video online, to drive more, to generate even greater outreach to prospective homebuyers and visitors to our community. We came up with this idea because people shop online, and this is a great testament to the type of place we are. But it doesn't take the place of the guided tours. We still get interest from people in We still get interest from people in having residents take them around the towns, and we have this fabulous tour that's been going on for over 10 years. And there's renewed interest from a number of the Realtors. And actually, I'm going to use that as a segue and let Audrey tell you about that.
We realize that there is a considerable turnover in Realtors moving between agencies and Realtors moving in and out of different communities. So what we want to do with our Realtor Advisory Group is to relaunch our relationship and partnership with the Realtors by holding sessions. Specifically, we want to inform some and remind others that we do offer a face-to-face tour and offer them the opportunity to ride along to see what would be shared with their prospective clients. We also want to work with them to continue to find the right places to market Maplewood and South Orange online. The last item on the slide there talks about financial incentive, our home improvement loan. And I think we may have mentioned this to you in the past. We are right on the verge of being able to offer the loan right now. We're doing some due diligence on some legalities around our eligibility criteria. The loan, just to remind you, is intended to increase the marketability of our entire community by making all neighborhoods look physically attractive. So it's basically about curb appeal. We will offer up to $5,000 to residents of Maplewood and South Orange for them to make maintenance repairs that will improve the appearance of their homes, whether it could be steps, windows, roofs, doors, external painting, et cetera. And the money would be paid to the contractor, but then the homeowner would repay the loan. What we think is attractive, what we know is attractive about this loan is that unlike many other loans that are offered by both South Orange and Maplewood, there is not a low-income requirement. So everyone could be eligible. The loan, up to $5,000, is going to be offered at prime, and it's unsecured. And there's not any place you can go today and find a loan that's unsecured at that rate. And then people will have three years, up to three years, to pay it back. So with the amount of money we have and the cap that we've set, we can make up to 15 loans. We've got literature ready to go. We've got a promotions plan ready to go. We've been working out details with our partner, Investors Bank. We're just now trying to make sure that we've dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's in terms of eligibility so that we don't run into any problems about who actually gets an opportunity to participate in this.
Oh, you're going to do this as a big engagement?
Yes. Under volunteerism, this is something that Maplewood and South Orange is strongly noted for and that we're always looking to shore up. And the Civic Engagement Institute that we launched in the fall of last year, we think is going to be a jewel in that effort. We had 14 graduates from the institute in the fall, and we're now ready to offer another session, which starts up very shortly. What we have done is tried, we've looked at the evaluation forms from the participants to figure out what we need to do to make it even more attractive and even more effective. So we've moved from six sessions to four sessions, understanding how people's time is so difficult to manage, and people sometimes can't make a commitment for that many sessions. We still will have the same meaty topics that we had before, basically preparing volunteers to actually go in and feel comfortable and effective at doing a good job. We're going to continue to focus on the areas of understanding your own personal style and the styles of others. And we have a professional psychologist who's part of our workshop to do that. We're going to actually have the participants take a Myers-Briggs Index as an objective way to look at their preferences in how they work with other people. And we're going to have a professional time management, organizations person who will be giving tips on managing your time so you can make space in your life to do volunteering. And then we're going to talk about group dynamics. What are some of the ways that you can be more effective in dealing in groups? What are some of the ways that you can have a voice when you're in a situation where people may have differing points of view? And then the fourth session is going to be a volunteer opportunity session. There, we're going to combine both our governments, both town governments, and organizations in the community to come out and do a brief overview so that the participants have an opportunity to kind of see what's out there and see what's a good match for their particular skill and interest. The quid pro quo with this whole program is that we're doing this workshop for free, but in reality, there's a commitment. And we actually have created a pledge that goes along with, at the application, this session, where the participant is expected to volunteer for at least six months in a Maplewood or South Orange organization. So that's kind of the payback to the community. We think by creating these small groups of prepared volunteers, over time, it's going to really have an impact on our overall community.
Also, under volunteerism, we have the Volunteer Fair. That actually is connected to the MLK observance. It follows the observance every year. This year, we had about 20 agencies, I'd say?
Yes.
About 20 different groups that came and filled the hall, the fellowship hall at Congregation Ohad Shalom. They set up tables, they try, you know, they try to recruit volunteers at the fair. In addition to trying to get volunteers, there are also these instant impact activities or opportunities to donate or participate in some sort of service. And we're always looking for more groups to come. So if you know of a service organization in our town or even in surrounding communities, we're open to having. Then we have some from Newark, from Orange, East Orange, Livingston, come. And we're also looking to build the service component of this event. Service can happen anytime over that weekend. It can happen at the fair if you have a donation opportunity. I know it's a year away, but we need people to think about it now. The picture that, the two pictures that you're seeing, on the left is a picture of the 2013 Civic Engagement participants working together on a project. And on the right is the people from Rent Party, the back, the group that puts together, well, they do a lot of things, but they have been at our fair putting together backpacks for families in need in Maplewood and South Orange. Okay, and the last slide we have, oh, just go back to volunteering for a moment. What we're talking to you about here today is a lot of the top-level programming that the community sees. What supports that, Audrey and I don't do it all on our own. We do a lot, but we don't do it all on our own. We do have a volunteer board, and we have a lot of volunteers that support our standing committees, our task forces, our ad hoc committees. Without them, these things in the two towns wouldn't be happening. So I give a big shout out to all of our volunteers. And just so that you understand that in addition to what look like finely honed programs is the result of a lot of time and effort that people put in through, you know, every week, every month, throughout the year. All right, so the last slide is just a brief update on fundraising. As you know, we do get a base portion of our funding from both the townships, and 70% of our budget is raised through donation appeals. Twice a year, we send out letters to a donor base, individuals in Maplewood and South Orange, some people beyond our borders as well. And we receive a good portion of our funding there through individuals, a smaller portion through grants. This year, we have our ECLAB grant, we have something from the Franz L. Foundation, and we have signed on with Grant Station, Grant Resource, I forget the name of the process that we're using, but we are doing a lot more research into other grant possibilities for 2014. And then finally, through our events. Our biggest event, as many of you know, is celebrating integration in October during Coalition Month, and we try to run a few other fundraising events also throughout the year. And that is how we raise our money. So we, again, are very, very thankful to our individual donors. Our 2013 annual report we just produced, I hope that you all received it. I put all of you on our mailing list. If you haven't gotten a copy, please let me know. I have plenty here. We only send to our donors, funders, and key communicators. We try to save paper and mailing, but we do, it is for the public, it's online. If you are interested in being on our mailing list, let us know at twotowns.org. It is also sent out electronically through our newsletter. So there are lots of ways to access what we've done over the last year. And that is the end of our slides.
So we thank you for your time. And any comments or questions before we step down?
Just a real quick one and a simple one. What's the size of your board, the number of members of your board?
I think we have 17 or 18 trustees, not including our liaisons from the Board of Ed and Maplewood and South Orange Township Committees.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for the presentation and all the hard work. Thank you.
Sorry we made you follow up cute children as well. It's a tough act.
It's true. It's a tough act for me to follow up. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting up to public comments. I think we had one sign up, George.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Hope everybody's having a good night. My name is George Mathias. I live at 219 South Orange Avenue, apartment 501 in South Orange, New Jersey. First of all, I would love to take the opportunity to thank the Village of South Orange for doing the wonderful job that you all did during our recent snowstorms. The Department of Public Works was very active. As soon as the snow came, they came out with the saw and shoveled and were very, very diligent. So that was a great help to emergency responders such as police, fire, EMS, et cetera. So I do recognize the effort that's been put by South Orange. You all deserve a good hand clap, in my opinion, because you all work diligently together as a team. The only disappointment, oh, let me back it up. I would also love to commend the South Orange Connect website. It's been a real asset to the town and to myself because I've been sending in requests of different homeowners, storekeepers, believe it or not, even some churches, that have not even touched the snow in weeks, which is not a good thing because residents are being forced to walk in our streets, which is a hazard because they are at risk of being in an accident, run down, to say the least. So that's my concern of people that are proprietors, homeowners, et cetera, that refuse to remove ice and snow from their sidewalks. And another concern I do have is that the crosswalks, a lot of them at the corners are blocked by banks of snow that are bricks of ice. At the corner of Grove Road and Roston Avenue, it should be noted that the snowbank is about six feet high. So if a motorist is coming down Roston Avenue onto Grove Road, that's an accident waiting to happen if a car is coming down Grove Road because they cannot see each other because the snowbank is about six feet tall. And there are other locations which are kind of too many to name, but if somebody could maybe just ride around and check it out. But the hottest spot is right there at the Grove Road and Roston Avenue intersection. And another thing is 143 Grove Road, the property owner has not even touched the snow. So you have four feet of unshovelled snow on their sidewalk. There's numerous property owners on Park Place that have not even shoveled the snow. So that's a hazard. And also, I would like to bring up the fact that, I don't know whose jurisdiction it is, but the Rite Aid parking lot is dark. There are numerous lights that are out. I asked the Rite Aid to check it out. They told me it's the township's light, so I don't know whose jurisdiction that is. And another thing that I have noticed is when you go up South Orange Avenue as if you're going towards Livingston Mall where there's a lot of those curves, there are numerous street lights that are out. So PSCNG needs to step up and replace those bulbs because it's very, very dark. You can't see, especially if you're going around those curves with all those lights that are out. And I would like to say thank you very much for your attention and your diligence to these matters.
Thank you, and we'll make sure to look into all of those. Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak at this time? Okay, at this time, I'd like to close public comments. And move on to the approval of minutes.
Is there a motion to...
Well, we have the January 13 special meeting minutes, the January 13 conference meeting, and January 27 regular meeting. For the motion?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Rosner.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Clark. All in favor? And any opposed, abstentions?
Abstaining. January 13, I wasn't present.
Thank you, although I'm sure you watched the meeting.
I did, religiously.
Twice.
Three times.
Okay, we have one ordinance on first reading.
That is not, that will be on the next meeting.
Oh, okay. Never mind. Let's move to the consent agenda. Were there items that were going to be added to this?
I can email the agenda.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move that we amend the consent agenda to include 2014-054, which would be a resolution appointing regular and alternate members to the South Orange Board of Adjustment. And additionally, a resolution for separate action, 2014-055, a resolution appointing Susan Caljean as village clerk and registrar.
Thank you. And just, Mr. Rother, if you could just confirm that we can add these and move forward with them?
Certainly.
Okay. Thanks. Ms. Smith, if you want to walk us through our consent agenda?
I think we need a second and a vote for the additions, right?
Yes, although, do you want to do that at the end, just so that if we're amending something that we haven't read through yet?
I already made the motion.
She's motioning to bring those...
I mean, I don't care, but it just seems odd to amend something that we haven't actually...
She's motioning to walk those on to the...
I'm sorry, what did you say?
You're motioning to walk those on to the consent agenda. They're not currently a part of the agenda, so she's motioning to add them to the agenda. So we need a second.
Okay. So this move is seconded by Trustee Davis Ford. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have two additional items on our consent agenda. Could we read through them, please?
And I was to add, to, and to adopt?
That was to add to the...
Just the add to?
Just the add.
All right. Resolution 201448, resolution awarding contract to the South Mountain YMCA for basketball program. Collaboration services in the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs in the Mount Nautic exceed $15,000. Resolution 201449, a resolution authorizing a purchase of a Ford F-150 truck for the Department of Recreation by state contract T-2099, vehicles, trucks, pickups, class one, vendor 8585437, Chas S. Winter, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $21,865. Resolution 201450, resolution hiring a full-time laborer in the Department of Public Works. Resolution 201451, a resolution granting Raffle License 1246 to Congregation Bethel for Casino Night. Resolution 201452, a resolution accepting proposal of She International Corporation and awarding a contract under New Jersey State Contract M00M003 for GIS mapping software to be used in conjunction with the SOPD CAD/RMS system in an amount not to exceed $26,285. Resolution 201453, a resolution appointing Susan Caljean, which Trustee Cullen already mentioned, as village clerk and registrar for the Township of South Orange Village pursuant to NJSA 48:9-133, et cetera, in section 5-26 of the Village Code. Resolution 201454, I want to pause.
That's a resolution appointing regular and alternate members to the South Orange Board of Adjustment. And to clarify, 2014-53 was to be on separate action.
Separate action.
And there will be a resolution potentially, which we could announce later, that...
And there will be a resolution potentially, which we could announce later, that is related
to the executive session we have to reconvene into.
Wait, sorry, say that last part again.
The, there may be, as you're aware, we had to break our executive session, we have to reconvene into executive session, and depending on the outcome of that executive session, I would advise that we not adjourn this meeting, announce that we are going to reconvene back into open session, and that action may be taken, which would be potentially another resolution, depending on the outcome of the contingency.
Is that resolution listed here, or this is a separate resolution?
That would be a separate one.
So we need to pull it out for separate action.
So that's going to be a resolution?
But then, wait, wait, that's what I was asking, that this is 053?
I think it was initially listed as --
Caljean?
No, no, no. 053 is the one regarding the Third and Valley Redevelopment Project. It's still listed as 053, and it needs to be removed for separate action.
And the Caljean separate action is 2014-055.
Correct.
And 54 is the Board of Adjustment appointments?
Correct.
So that's a part of consent agenda.
So 53 and 55 are removed for separate action?
Correct.
Separately?
Mm-hmm. 53, 54, and 55.
Each one separately, not together. 55 will do as part of this session now before we adjourn.
Okay. Which is actually under the village president's, or that's a part, that's what the Board of Adjustments, correct, that the board has to go on?
I'm sorry, what?
2014 --
Forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-four are on the consent agenda. Fifty-three is held for separate action pending the outcome of the reconvened executive session. Fifty-five will be on for separate action immediately following action on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Can you --
Maybe you should be the next honorary village president for a day. It's a bit of a pay decrease, but.
Can you just explain why we're doing this, coming back out of close? Because this is something that we, from a policy perspective, said we wouldn't do, that we have an emergent issue that we need to resolve.
Yeah, the Third and Valley Redevelopment Project is scheduled for closing next week, and based on recent issues that have arisen relating to the South Orange Rescue Squad relocation and construction agreement, the outcome of that continued executive session would impact the course of action, and that needs to occur before the executive session, before the closing next week.
Thank you. Okay, so are there any questions on our consent agenda? If folks?
Yeah. On 52, do you want to give us a quick explanation?
Which one's 52?
The CAT RMS.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and certainly, both trustees, Levison as chair of the Finance and IT Committee, and trustee Column as chair of the Public Safety Committee, have been involved in the process as well, as part of our CAT RMS implementation, which we recently approved the contract within Forces, which is the computer-aided dispatch and records management system, computer systems in the police department. One additional component of this involves GIS mapping under state contract through SHI International, which the software itself comes from a company called WTH. It's a pretty comprehensive suite of GIS mapping, which integrates directly into the CAT RMS. It includes importing all the GIS data of all the parcels in town. It'll greatly enhance the CAT RMS system for our police officers. They'll have access to pull up every single parcel, get all the parcel data, including the full history of every call that's ever been there, who lives there, outstanding warrants, any issues that they need to be aware of. So this is sort of the, I think, the final piece in the whole CAT RMS implementation.
As well as it creates a real-time map of where the cars are out on the call.
Correct.
Ms. Smith, for the benefit of the public, because the appointments to the Board of Adjustment were a late addition to the agenda, could you read the names and the position?
I have the resolution.
I can do that.
I can log in.
The appointments would be Edrick Semper to a regular member position. This is actually a reappointment of Mr. Semper. His new term will be from 1/1/14 to 12/31/17, since it's a continuation of his service. Similarly, Todd DeScala, also a regular member, also a reappointment, so his term will again be a four-year term from 1/1/14 to 12/31/17. Also now appointing Bob Shapiro to a regular member, the balance of an unexpired term, so that term would start with his appointment tonight, 2/24/14, and continuing through 12/31/15. And finally, appointment of Paul Breen as an alternate member number two, which again would start with his appointment tonight, 2/24/14 through 12/31/15.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move the consent agenda.
Okay, moved by trustee Column.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Schnall. Could, we have the roll, please?
Yes. Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
The consent agenda, trustee Clark?
Yes.
The consent agenda was approved.
Thank you. We have one resolution for separate action. Should be 2014-055.
Yes. Fifty-three first?
The 53 is going to wait until after the executive session.
So 55. Resolution of the Township of South Orange Village and the County of Essex, New Jersey, and can, that one? No.
That one's --
That was afterwards, okay. Resolution appointing Susan Caljean as village clerk and registrar for the Township of South Orange Village pursuant to NJSA 48:9-133, et cetera, in section 5-26 of the Village Code.
Thank you. Trustee Davis Ford, would you do us a favor of walking us through a little bit of the process here? Obviously, bringing on a new village clerk is a pretty big appointment for us to do, and we went through a pretty thorough process, and you're probably the best person to speak to the process we did go through and how we got to this point, which I think we're all very excited about.
Yes, I'm very excited to share what our process was for this critical position for the village. We started through September through October with our search for the selection. The village advertised on New Jersey League of Municipalities and New Jersey Clerk Association. And at that time, we received approximately fifteen resumes. As a result of the village administrator and the committee, and the selection committee consisted of Sheena Column, trustee Sheena Column, trustee Howard Levison, myself, President Torpe, and Administrator Barry Lewis. We narrowed down the candidates to two interviewed as a selection committee, to those two individuals, and we determined that they were really not a good fit for the needs of the Village of South Orange. So the administrator was charged with re-advertising on behalf of the village for the position. And that advertisement was sent out in October. In December 2013, we were, we identified some additional qualified candidates, and again, we were not satisfied. December 2013 through January 2014, we received approximately twelve new resumes. Of those twelve resumes, there were three finalists that we interviewed. And we identified the candidate from the result of that process, and I'm happy to share with you a little bit about the candidate. Her name is Susan Caljean. She is a resident municipal clerk and with the RMC, a certified municipal registrar. She has earned distinction as a certified clerk from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, and she has served as committee and advisory board member of the Municipal Clerk Association of New Jersey. She has served, she serves as the president of the Morris County Clerks Association and has over thirteen years of experience as a New Jersey municipal clerk. She hails from the, she's presently a clerk at the Chatham Borough, the Borough of Chatham. And she is looking forward to this opportunity here, and we couldn't be more delighted. And one of the things that I want to share with everyone about our selection process is that the search committee had an opportunity to really, really vet, ask her a lot of questions, and we had two meetings with this candidate. The first meeting was a comprehensive interview with the selection committee, and the second meeting was with the entire board. And as a result of the feedback from the entire board, we all agreed, and that often always happened, that Susan Caljean was the best person, an individual qualified, for the position of village clerk of South Orange. So that's pretty much the process.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, did you have --
I did want to just, for the record, note that Susan would have loved to be here tonight, but she is actually covering a council meeting in Chatham. Otherwise, she would have joined us this evening.
Thank you.
Do you have a start date?
March 17th.
Great, thank you, trustee Davis Ford. Are there any other questions or comments about any of this?
I would just like to add that, being a part of the legal and personnel committee, I was really excited about this candidate. I thought she did a really incredible job, kind of explaining how she sees herself in this community. The technical skills are there, the temperament is there, and so I'm really looking forward to voting in favor of this resolution tonight. I think we're a very fortunate community to have somebody of her caliber coming to join our South Orange team. And I'd like to thank trustee Deborah Davis Ford for a really good process and for helping us fine-tune the next village clerk who will be joining us.
Thank you. With that being said, do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Levison.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Schnall. We have a roll, please?
Yes. Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
The board has adopted Resolution 2014-55, correct?
Great, thank you.
Mr. President, if I could, just, I think we'd be remiss in not, as you know, we've been without a clerk now for about four months, and I really think it's that we need to recognize Chanel Smith, our deputy clerk, who really stepped in, rose to the occasion, and I think did a fantastic job. I know we're all very appreciative and have a lot of faith in Chanel and what she did for us, and I think this is a good opportunity, bringing in, you know, an experienced clerk like this can only benefit Chanel and her eventual growth into a full clerk's position. So I thought we should recognize that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chanel.
It's definitely the case, and I think we're all very excited what the fully staffed clerk's office is, you know, making sure, I know you guys have been under a lot of pressure, and they won't admit it, but they've been, they're hard at work, and so it's great to be able to kind of fully staff up, and just looking forward to the dynamic in the office, and just having kind of the full team there and ready to go.
I'm ready. Thank you.
Howard has planned a new office.
And that might be the best part of it for y'all.
Yeah, that's right. That's why Chanel's smiling. So we had that other resolution that I guess we're talking about after, which was the 53. So then, I'd like to move on to the approval of bills.
Yeah, I move that the list of bills audited by the treasurer and provided to the board prior to this meeting for examination. I move it.
Okay, moved by trustee Levison.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Schnall.
I defer to trustee Schnall.
Do we have the roll, please?
Yes. Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
The board has approved the bill's list.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting up for public comments. Again, if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak at this time, please come forward. Okay, seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to speak, I'd like to close public comments, and we have two quick discussion items. The first, trustee Rosner, New Jersey Transit.
Yeah, a few weeks ago, I got the update on the schedules for New Jersey Transit. Actually, it came the day after the last meeting, unfortunately. I don't know how hard I pushed them to give it to me the night before. But there are some minor changes coming for the schedules. I won't say anything more exciting, sort of going to make dramatic changes to anybody's life. There are more trains to Hoboken, so for people who go to Hoboken, there'll be more options, or for people who have to switch to another train, there'll be more options and more trains coming back from Hoboken. The Amtrak has once again made several adjustments, including removing the train, which theoretically is going to help a lot with the rush hour trains. They removed one of the trains that runs in the peak hour, between 7:30 and 8 o'clock, which has been one that's been a seller, that's always late and always causing delays. The bad news is the 734 is making one more stop, but they insist because this seller is not going to be there anymore, that the train will actually get in on time. So we'll actually see in the 805 train, which has been extremely crowded, he's going to have one more car added to it, and they're going to be removing one stop before, giving us the equivalent of almost 200 more seats on that train. Of course, it's still not enough. The bigger problem has been, though, the maintenance and the equipment failures that have nothing to do with Amtrak, and there's been constant delays. You know, they probably have a 90% peak hour not-on-time performance, just the opposite of what they're trying for. And the last few weeks have been absolute disaster. We know there's been equipment breakdowns and maintenance issues. But we've been told that Christie, when he cut the budget when he first became governor, which led to that large fare increase, also, the first place Jersey Transit looked to cut back was on the maintenance, and that they've been, through attrition, they've been dropping the number of maintenance workers, and it's been showing up now, years later, in the increased maintenance issues. And I think it's one of the things we need to do is to get back with Cody, McKean, and J.C., who are representatives who fund New Jersey Transit, and we need to bring them back for a meeting, whether it be in public or whether we do a meeting with the Jersey Transit Committee, to really, to really make them stand up and make our voices heard. We have 4,000 people a day using that station now, and it's no small number. 50% are from South Orange, but we also know 50% are from other areas that are representative by the three of them. And I think we really need to make our voice heard on this, and we need to push them, the governor, to restore some of that funding to Jersey Transit, just specifically for the maintenance and equipment purchases.
Two things, thank you for the update. One is, could you, do you have anything, because the last time we did a schedule update, we did post it on the website, and, you know, it'd be nice to do that again. Do you have what you just said, that, okay, so we'll connect afterwards, and we'll get that up on the website, too, just as, you know, considering how many people in our town use the train. And the second is, I'll coordinate with you, but we'll schedule either a meeting with them to come in here, or toward a meet outside of that, maybe back in New Jersey Transit, or if we want them to come here, we can figure it out. But we can definitely do that.
Thank you.
Trustee Rosner, do you need any official board action, or a resolution, or anything like that, to advocate on behalf of the residents and commuters, or right now are you still just kind of meeting with folks, et cetera?
You know, it's just, I think we need to meet with them first, the other elected officials, because the New Jersey Transit reports straight to the legislature. They don't really pay attention to local town officials. Now, indirectly or directly, Cody, McKean, and J.C. are the bosses, along with Christie of New Jersey Transit, and I would like to see what they would like to come back with us for. If they want us to pass a resolution along with West Orange, Maplewood, and other towns, I think it would make sense at that point.
Okay.
Thank you. Trustee Column, the Village Hall RFEI?
Yes, okay. So give me a few moments to go through all of this. So as the board may recall, once the timeline got posted to the village website, and thank you to the village president and our village administrator for getting that up there, one of kind of the stories I thought was missing from the timeline originally posted was the due diligence that the board had undertaken in 2010 to look at adaptive reuse scenarios for historic buildings. At that time, after the original programming for the proposed village hall renovation came forward, some of the things that the board had contemplated, I mean, some of you were on the board, so you know this, but it's just more for the public's benefit, was based on what we've received for village hall, remaining village hall, are there other alternative scenarios out there that the board may want to consider? So the board had commissioned studies and an economic impact assessment, and from that, it evaluated what village hall could be if it was no longer hosting municipal offices. Just for the baseline of what we're talking about, that's 13,000 square feet, the basement being about 1,300, first floor 6,500, and second floor 5,000 square feet. Currently, there's 35 reserved public spaces and 37 public metered. Currently, there's 35 reserved public spaces and 37 public metered, I'm sorry, 35 reserved public spaces and then 37 public metered spaces. So as a part of this study, what the firm had evaluated was, the first question was, what general reuse scenarios show sufficient support from market and real estate to warrant further consideration? And the second question was, what type of implementation approaches are compatible with those uses? From that came a report that was delivered to the Board of Trustees in December of 2010, which had a total of four different schemes that were presented. The first one being a white tablecloth, high-end restaurant with the first floor roughly being 6,700 square feet and the second floor being office space. The second scheme being, again, on the first floor restaurant and the second floor being residential units. The third scheme being a smaller restaurant with additional flex space on the first floor with the second floor being village operations. And then the fourth scheme being flexible cultural community assets based on the first floor and the same on the second floor as well. So looking at this, the Village then issued what is referred to as a request for expressions of interest, which is essentially what you do to bring in a qualified developer based on what the market demand was at that point in time, again, in early 2010. From that point, the Village advertised for what appears to be a two-month period of time, but from what Trustee Rosner had told me, it got extended by a couple months. And then from that point, there was only one interested developer who brought an idea forward to the Board of Trustees, which was ultimately rejected at the time. And had I been on the Board, I would have certainly rejected it as well. So my question, having gone through some of the steps that the Board took in 2010 is, and into 2011, is now knowing the timeline that we do, knowing essentially when the abatement will be done and at what point we will be going out for bids for the actual construction work, is there any downside for continuing to keep the request for expressions of interest out there in the public domain? From what I could gather, at least from the minutes and from what I saw on the Village website, clearly the due diligence in terms of the analysis of the market and what the adaptive reuse scenarios would be were certainly there. And kudos to all of you for participating in that. I think it shows good faith on behalf of taxpayers that we're not so married to one single use, that we can't really think about what the alternatives would be. But it's not clear to me where this was advertised, whether there was kind of an effort to just post it to the Village website and get it in the Star Ledger, and it's like, hey, historic building for sale, or whether there really was a valiant effort on behalf of the Village to really market this property for alternative uses. And at that time, if you recall, it was kind of questionable what was happening with our Administrator. At that point in time, there was a little instability. Mr. Lewis was not yet with us. So I guess my question is, one, assuming that there's no impact on the timeline that we're on right now, also assuming that there is not currently a budget impact, would the Board have any objection to, in a parallel path, reposting the request for expressions of interest that you had advertised in 2010, again into 2011? And I would say that I do believe the market conditions have changed, and time is on our side right now, knowing what we know now from our construction manager, is that we do have a window of opportunity that I don't think hurts either way, to see if there is an adaptive reuse scenario that could work on behalf of the community. And if it comes back with nothing, it hasn't slowed anything down, and if we come back with an interested buyer, that's certainly something I'd be willing to consider.
I feel like asking Barry or Steve to weigh in on what negatives there might be before I offer any comments, if you have any that you want to throw out there.
In terms of the negatives, you know, it is interesting, because Trustee Cullen broached this subject, and I had seen it on the agenda as well. And, you know, in terms of my mind, I was like, what message would this send to prospective bidders? And I'm not sure which it would, whether it indicates that, you know, sharpen your pencils because we have other alternatives, or whether it indicates that we're not really serious about it. So I don't know where that would shake out. I mean, obviously, we spent the money to have the reuse study done and the RFEI prepared. Certainly, I would, you know, agree that I think in 2010 was not the optimal time in the market to be looking for prospective people. Again, as long as, you know, it was not anything that would slow down the current process, because we will certainly come to a point where we're committed to the asbestos abatement. I think that would be sort of the one tweak, in the sense that whatever was being offered, it would be offered in that condition, and there would have to be that work done. You know, but the other question would be, at some point, we're going to get to the point of the actual construction contract, you know, at which point you're kind of at the point of no return. But until that time, I don't.
Well, and there is a short fuse on it. There's a very short fuse on it, because just as soon as the asbestos has been removed and the interior can be examined, we're off on another phase of the, actually, the last phase of the architectural work and really the front end, the very front end of the letting of the contract for contractors. So I would say there is a very small window in the process right now. And I would say, you know, probably 45 days, something like that.
Did the PSENG get the temporary power set up later than?
I don't know. I don't recall seeing. I'll have to check.
Today was the theoretical deadline that they had given us?
I think it was supposed to be by today, but I'm not sure. I'll check my emails, see if something came in.
I do recall at the last Public Works meeting, Sal said that there were 17 contractors who picked up prequalification packets. So that process is already underway.
I just, you know, when I, you know, the study that we did last time, in which Trustee Cullen uttered to, you know, which included versions of a white tablecloth restaurant, also included us giving away a liquor license, which was, which most of the Board found totally untenable to the other restaurant liquor license owners, and not necessarily that we, and we've all agreed that we would not do that. So that was off the table. The question of whether keeping it open or redoing another study.
Not redo, I'm not proposing delaying or redoing another study.
Yeah, or just putting it, you know, putting it out there with realtors, again, you know, whether they want to buy the building. I think most people know, and if they want to come buy the building, you know, there are certain additional expenses we've had since then, in terms of it, which we'd want to be reimbursed for, I would think, at some level.
And also reimbursed for the million-dollar grant that we would have to give back for the exterior?
Yeah, we'd have to return grant money, which I understand we haven't spent yet, but it always looks bad for future grants. When you take a grant and then return it, you've always been told that it makes it more difficult to get the same type of grant again for the future. My own, it probably is no harm in leaving it open. My belief is that it won't really do us any good because of the cost involved of renovating that building, that nobody's really going to want the building, and because they can't make any changes to the structure on the outside, that they're stuck with a building that has very limited functionality for most places. It makes lousy office space, and its best use might be a bed and breakfast, but to spend $3, $4 million at the minimal, if it was done, would probably be not something that you would ever see done in this marketplace. So I'm not really sure what we're hoping for at this point, and having gone through that, you know, that study, I would hate to see it delay anything.
But I'm not, again, not proposing a delay on it, is that we do have a window right now.
Yeah, I know. If you tell me that this is not going to hold up, at the end of 45 days, this conversation ends, whenever the asbestos abatement ends.
Well, I would also agree, it's not the end of 45 days, because if you look at our timeline right now.
I said 45 days or whatever, the time is we have to go to bid.
Well, yeah, exactly. But if you look at the point in time where the Village advertises for bids for rehabilitation work, that is June 24th.
Yeah, but they actually have to start doing, once the asbestos abatement is done, people come in there and start preparing the work.
Agreed.
There's a charge for that. So that's, I think, the deadline they're alluding to.
And people are going to start advocating for it.
If I could put another perspective to this, I've been involved in renovations of historic mills in Patterson. I did a job of an armory in White Plains. They are difficult deals to do. They're not easy deals to do. And they usually involve a variety of subsidies and tax treatments that aren't put together quickly. The front end of the development process of historic structures is involved and takes more time than the typical new construction deal. And that's the only concern I would have, given the timeframes we have teed up now for the building.
I would agree with that, but we did identify, and we only had one bidder, and for the public's benefit, there was a few things that the Village had at the time agreed to consider. From the original adaptive reuse proposal, it was a sale, a sale leased back, and a partial sale, based on the recommendations that we got in 2010. And this is where I would disagree with Trustee Rosner, was the market did suggest that it was compatible for this time, at that point in time, in 2010. And now I would say it's even more compatible now. And that's not my opinion. It was what was provided to the Board, which is how they develop their different scenarios and their different schemes. So the different things for the Board to consider, and I wasn't involved in the liquor license discussion, but it was one of the things that the Board at the time agreed to discuss, was there was a reduction in sale price, there was assistance in facilitating approvals, facilitation of licensees and approvals, including a liquor license, historic tax credits, a tax abatement, tax increment financing, and a pilot, providing necessary infrastructure, credit enhancement, financial assistance through secondary financing, performance grants, operating lease commitments, and other necessary and appropriate assistance. So these were all the different things that were considered at the time, unfortunately not knowing where this was actually advertised. Again, it feels like a lot of due diligence was put into looking at an adaptive reuse scenario, but having only gotten one bidder, it's not clear to me who we marketed to. If it's a link on our southorange.org website, like major historic building.
No, it was more than that.
It wasn't.
But where, Howard? Because I can't, like, who was the professional and where was it put out for people who do this type of work?
It's detailed in the RFEI. I mean, and Steve has opined about some of the financial portions of it.
Oh, they can't hear you.
The financial portions of it, that there's questionable legality of doing it. And in fact, I have Steve's opinion right here in front of me. And again, there was the assumption of the liquor license that I don't think any of us would want to agree with, but Steve, I think, opines that said it couldn't be done.
Plus, the one bidder also said that the Village would be on the hook for any cost overruns beyond his tolerance, which, he talked about $100,000 repair for a roof. When we were looking, everyone, every other bidder was talking closer to a million for this slate roof. We couldn't figure out where he got that number from, and then he admitted that he never actually came and looked at the building. So it was kind of a very bizarre bid, which I wouldn't ever would have counted on as something as a serious bid. It was really looked upon as a lease-back situation where he was going to do the work.
Well, I didn't even think what was presented to the Board at that time was reasonable in the leaseback. It was a bad deal for the Village.
But in terms of the, in terms of the study, when we originally went into it, we had been told that we could probably expect to get several hundred thousand dollars, maybe as much as $800,000 for the building, which we were all, good, you can sell the building for $800,000, let's do it and do what we're doing with the temporary space and do a permanent space at 76 South Orange Avenue. We didn't even get a bid for a dollar. And there was more, and I, you know what, where they exactly, I don't really remember exactly where they advertised and what bulletins and how they did it, but it was a professional firm, which we paid $20,000, $30,000, $50,000.
I don't agree with that. I don't believe there was, unless somebody can point to it right now. I saw the study, the economic impact analysis. I'm not seeing anywhere on any resolutions a firm that actually did the marketing to get this out there after you completed this much work.
I don't remember the name of the firm, but they were supposed to do marketing of it, too. So I just don't remember the name of it.
Howard, do you know who that firm was and where they marketed it? Because I searched. You saw the email that I sent to the Village Administrator.
Well, one of the questions I raised to you in an email as well, that I think, from a due diligence perspective, you should take the other side of the equation and try to put the numbers together and all of the things that would be needed to be done if, in fact, that building needed to be sold. The fact is, is that the exterior of the building is restricted by the historic trust. You have to go, that exterior has to be done, no matter who buys it. There's an investment. And there is a set of numbers that you can run against it and could say, is this really reasonable for someone to spend these kinds of dollars to take that building? And what could go into it? I mean, due diligence on the other side of the equation. But let me see if I can find the name of the.
You could add to that the costs of the fact that we'd have to go out and find a new Village Hall.
Well, I mean, but if you ran the numbers on maintaining the offices that we have right now in 76 South Orange Avenue, I think you would come up with a pretty interesting scenario if it remained there.
Including Sopac. We don't have a hall.
It's an unfair number anyway, because we know that the lease number would be much different on a long-term lease, and we have increasing savings. It wouldn't be 200,000 times 30 years.
And plus, you don't have a meeting.
You'd have to put in for the escalation clauses and whatever else there is. And of course, at that point, the landlord knows that we have a whole different negotiation on the table.
Okay.
It would not be a realist to take the rent we're paying today, multiply that times 30 years, and say that's the number.
Well, of course not. I don't think that's how math actually works. So let's go back to the actual, original question that I posed to the Board, was assuming that there's no additional monetary outlay from the governing body. Hold on, that's one. Assuming that we don't slow down the process of the parallel path.
Start right there.
Would you not repost?
Who in this organization is going to run that project?
I would put it on the Administrator's office.
With all of the other things that they have to do.
Well, hold on, Howard. Let's be really clear. You already have the document. We already have a study that you spent big money on, the time that was put into the firm doing the study, to looking at the different scenarios, to doing the, you know, economic impact assessment of what would work. It is all already there. What I'm asking is for this small window between now and awarding construction bids, that you don't totally get rid of the possibility. That may be, not certain. I don't think it's going to happen. But that maybe there could be somebody from the private development sector that would come in and say, one of these scenarios may work. We're going to at least submit our qualifications to see if you think we're a qualified developer. And if you think that our ideas are good and have merit, that we could respond to an RFP. It doesn't slow up anything else.
How do you propose to market that?
To actually, like, get this out there?
Yeah.
I would have to rely on Village staff for that. I'm not going to, like, you know, do you want me to Google search it right now? All I'm saying is that the due diligence of that is that this is a lot bigger market than Essex County, New Jersey, that if we want to aggressively, if there is a will, and maybe there isn't on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we want it to be Village Hall forever. I'm not there. I don't want it as Village Hall.
In fact, the respondent was from Virginia, the one who responded to that.
Because there are people out there who relish taking historic structures like that. And again, it's maintaining its historic nature, but I feel like we've done all of this so far. I want to know at least, and I don't have a better alternative. If I could stand in front of Village Hall and, you know, fight City Hall, no pun intended, I probably would. I don't like the project. I think everybody knows that. I don't have a better alternative right now. So I'm not going to stop it. I'm not going to say, hey, don't do it, don't spend the money. But I do want to say, let's open up a window of opportunity to see if anything else exists today before we award a construction contract to a bidder. And then once that's done, it's done.
Given the parameters that you set, that there's no additional money and no change to the timeframe, obviously, no reasonable person is going to object to it. I also say, I don't think anybody in their right mind would like to say, yeah, we want to spend X million dollars on renovating Village Hall if there's better options out there. So, yeah.
So we're in the same place. So that's what I'm asking for, is not a resolution or anything.
I think it's such a, you know, I think it's such a far stretch to think that someone's going to be in a white knight and come and save it, that I think it's wasting the Administration's time. But if Barry wants to.
I can tell you how I feel about this. Trustee Cullen is right. We have invested a lot of money in this study. We spent a lot of time discussing this. We didn't just look at the study and say, okay, this is all we got, it's done. We had many, many meetings and discussions about this. We paid a professional firm to market this, and that's the one response we received that Trustee Rosner shared with you, that it was totally unacceptable. And here's where I stand, Trustee Cullen. I'm willing to support your desire to not close the door, only if we're not going to invest any more, any additional money for this study. invest any more, any additional money for this study. We've already invested so much time and delay that it's increased the cost of getting this product, project done. And every time we delay the project after doing our due diligence, which we have, it is unacceptable to put additional financial burden on the village. Looking at 76 and numbers of what we're paying now, it's a really good deal. But again, as trustee Rosner said, it's because it was a two-year, two-and-a-half-year agreement. And with that, we still have no, we have to come to Sopac for our meetings. And we have storage out in some building out for Seton Hall that has been gracious enough to give charges a dollar. With the plans that we've all approved up at this point with our project manager, Village Hall, when it's completed, it will be one place for our village staff and consolidating departments all in one area, storage for our records, a place for our meetings, everything in one location. If we sell this building, we're going to have to give back the grant. And grants are harder to get from the state and federal level. And once you hold a grant for so long and you send it back, it is unlikely with the competition from a lot of municipalities for a lot of things that you'll be considered in the future. So with, and then finally, this process was, we hired a professional to market it because it needs a professional skill set. To put this process on the administration, who are already burdened with so many other priorities, doesn't work for me. So with that said, I'm very agreeable for not closing, looking for an opportunity, but I'm not, I'm not willing to accept the, any additional cost or anything that will impact the delay of what we're doing now, because the delay of this project has already increased in the cost to the taxpayers.
Well, I guess I would ask the administrator then, is there any, I mean, not to put this back on you, but ultimately, you'd be responsible for this. Do you think it's going to take an extreme, at least from your view, an extreme amount of time or effort from your office to repost and a request for expression of interest? Because if it does put an unnecessary burden on you, I wouldn't do it. But I think the trade-off of the amount versus a reposting may be worthwhile.
Well, I think if it's simply a question of taking the existing RFEI, update the dates or whatever, and post it, I don't imagine it's that much time. The bigger challenge would be to find where are you going to post it? And I don't know if anyone has experience in this. I don't know, and I wasn't here, to know where they attempted to market it, where they did or didn't advertise it. I don't know if any of the longer-serving trustees know what efforts they did.
Would it be satisfying to you to know how it was marketed? If we could show that to you, would that be something that would be beneficial?
It certainly would. I'm not seeing what Howard just sent me. Did you say you just-
I just sent you a paragraph from that report. The company's name is BPP, B-B-P and Associates, and it describes how he marketed the RFEI. And in fact, he, 140,000 followers in the Northeast and the Mid-Atlantic states. You could read the paragraph. It was fairly extensive listing.
It hasn't come in yet? I don't-
And just for the benefit of the people that are watching, do you want to just read it real quick, just people won't have access?
Although BPP did not advertise the RFEI, they did manage to expose it to considerable number of what Jim considered qualified developer syndicators. BPP posted the RFEI on ONVIA, a government contracting website, that according to Jim, boasts some 140,000 followers in the Northeast and Mid-Atlantic states. Whoops, just popped.
So there wasn't an advertisement? Was that the first line, that they didn't advertise?
In addition, in addition, BPP mailed the RFEI to 135 firms that Jim believed might have an interest in the project. BPP received 15 or 16 requests for additional information, 12 of which came from the BPP mailing. And just, in the end, only Echelon submitted, they were the ones in Virginia, Echelon who submitted a response. Jim confirmed my suspicion that, given the complexity of the proposed structure and the very small size of the deal, few reputable developer syndicators would be interested. That's Steve's comment.
Wait, what's Steve's comment? The last paragraph?
Yeah.
Or the last sentence that you read? Okay. I mean, it's worthwhile, and I stated it earlier. If you look at the number of building permits that are being pulled in the state of New Jersey now comparatively to the time when this actually hit the market, there's a pretty significant difference. So again, I think that up until the last inning where we award this contract and we make a commitment that it's going to be permanently municipal offices, which is kind of devastating to me, that we try and sell it and we market it and we look for an adaptive reuse scenario. I'm sorry, trustee Schnall, go ahead.
I'm curious, you know, from a timeline perspective, given that the abatement is about to begin, and if a firm actually did express interest based on a generic listing, I think if they wanted to go past to the next step, they would obviously want to see, you know, more, you know, information and see inside, do their own due diligence. Given our timeline, is that feasible? If you do get interest and firms have expressed a desire, do we have room in the timeline to actually allow for a reasonable amount of due diligence and proposal?
There's not going to be an insight?
Um, yeah. And I would defer, I would like to defer to our attorney, because he is, has extensive experience with this, these types of projects. Could you have a response to trustee Schnall's question? Do you have a response? What are your thoughts?
Well, the combination of where we are in the, in the process of letting the contracts, coupled with what I know the process is, to get interested parties in, look, come up with a plan and present it, the timelines are out of sync. And I can just anticipate that if you start in the process of bringing parties in to kick the tires and put proposals together, that process cannot be completed in any meaningful way within the timeframes that we now have in front of us to start the construction. There's just not enough time to make the two work in sync. I can't see that would happen.
But Steve, the first step of it is the request for expression of interest, which if there's not a qualified developer who says, all right, so here's our qualifications, we have the experience doing this, and here's something we're willing to consider, then ultimately, the village hasn't lost any time anyway. If we get a bunch of people who can't actually fulfill what we're trying to do or present a scenario that's in the financial best interest of the village, then goodbye, we haven't wasted any time.
It takes time to do that.
If we have somebody, I disagree. Look at the first time you posted it. It was out there for 60 days already. That was the original timeline. There was nothing that was held up as a result of that. You were still getting grants, you were still awarding contracts all throughout 2011. And I think that there's, if you look at the timeline right now, again, the abatement work isn't completed until the end of April. The post-abatement finalization of plans and specifications isn't till mid-June. The village isn't even advertising for bids for rehab work until the end of June, and we don't award that contract till August. Right now, it's February 24th. Do you not think between now and that proposed timeline, that there would be any detriment to keeping at least an RFEI out there for qualified private developers?
But there are things that are happening that you're not putting on your timeline for, for the job. There's walkthroughs right now, or there will, did you have the walkthrough?
No, but I mean, the other component, and to trustee Schnall's point, is, which would make it more challenging, because presumably, any potentially interested would want to look inside the building, and it's any day now going to be sealed off for the abatement, at which point, we can't even go in there. And that would present an additional challenge to some potentially interested person is, you know, take some pictures, or here's the floor plan, but you can't actually go in there. And that's projected to be a 60-day window. So that would create an additional challenge, I think.
What about the initial walkthrough of interested contractors?
Pre-qualified came.
They came already, okay. All right. But the parties that are being pre-qualified now, we have to keep their interest in order to get the best bids.
Absolutely. And I think it actually makes it more competitive to know that we're not so married that we're going to bond again, we've committed budgets, et cetera.
Oh, no, 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 no. It works exactly the opposite.
I think it harms.
I don't see how.
Why would, why would you invest the resources?
It does, because it takes a lot of time and effort to put a bid together.
Yes, of course.
And if they thought, and if they thought that they're going to put all this time and effort together only to be outmaneuvered by some other developer, I don't think they're going to take us seriously.
But I think that the history suggests that we're moving forward in that direction right now, but that the board isn't so committed to something that was previously agreed to or considered, that we're allowing all options to exist, all the way up until the moment where we award the construction contract and we say it's going to be municipal offices. So back to my original thought, if there's no objection to that, if the majority of the board says, it's going to be Village Hall, we've made that decision, we're not considering anything else, fine, I lost it, I'm outnumbered, I don't want to drag it on forever. If there is a true due diligence on our part to say, if there's no harm to it, if we're not setting back a timeline, if we're not spending more budget, more studies, keep it out there. Just keep it out there, is what I'm asking for.
I just want to be sure that there's no, there is, this has not created a perception that this board has not done their due diligence. We, how long have we been working on this, four years?
I think it has, which is what I opened with, is you already did it.
Well, you just stated that, you know, not to do the due diligence to keep this open. We spent four years, an enormous amount of time. We brought in experts, you know, we've invested in professionals. We've had the counsel of a subject matter expert in this type of process, meaning we're fortunate to have our counselor, who's very, very knowledgeable in these type of projects. And so, I am very concerned that if, that if we are aggressive about keeping this process open, that we're going to harm the opportunities for qualified company to take this on. The time and expense of getting your employees, if you're that type of company, out to do the proposals, to get all the things that need, they need to get done, to present a proposal for a project like this, is very expensive. And if I thought that, oh, they're really not serious, they're really, really, you know, taking advantage of our time and resources because they're really looking for this other option, I would pull back.
I wouldn't. This is a major contract for most of these people who are pre-qualified. The fact that we're trying to consider options, I don't think, you know, the thousands that they submit-
If they don't think it's real.
Of course it's real. There's 10 years of history showing that it is real.
So then that shows that we've done our due diligence. We've done our due diligence, you know?
I'd like to ask if folks could start to kind of converge towards making a decision about this.
You're right. If there, let me just be very clear. If there isn't a will on behalf of the Board of Trustees to want to do this, I don't want to do it and just say, we did it, whatever, post it on the website. What I was anticipating is, if we put it, if we recirculate it in a parallel path, there would be real energy on behalf of the board. So maybe I wasn't fair in asking the administrator, is it, is it that simple? It isn't that simple. Posting a link or throwing it in the news record isn't what I was thinking. I was thinking for the, you know, construction costs that we're looking at, the overall project costs, that it would be worthwhile to spend a few thousand dollars really getting it out there nationwide. If that's not in interest of the board, let's cabosh it.
And that's what, that's what the company, we paid to do that.
But in 2010-
Don't you think that we, we pay taxes too? Don't you think it's, people who pay taxes, people who volunteer their time, don't you think that spending four years going through this process-
10 years.
Well, I'm talking about, with the real focus with us, that we have not done due diligence?
No, I think it's been exceptional, Deborah.
We've gotten to the point now that we've made a decision, and we need to move forward with the decision that, that we spent a tremendous amount of time and resources to come to the point we are. And I really, really don't want to jeopardize any opportunity for us to get the best company to complete this project. I would like us to continue on the path that we're on.
I don't, you know, I understand trustee Cullen's point, and I get it, you know, we went through it, and some of us just don't want to rehash it because we feel like it's a waste of time on people's parts. I don't see, I don't see how the timeline works, because by the time people come, if someone comes along and says, I want to go in there, and in 60 days, the asbestos abatement comes in and they want us to look at it, and they, you could wind up delaying it, which is exactly what happened with this building when we were waiting for Seton Hall, who jerked us around for a year on it and cost us construction costs. We kept saying, it's just another week, it's just another week, and things get on. What I would see a better path to do is to, you know, is, is to try and find someone else to look at that space on the inside and say, because we don't really need all the space, is there a portion of space that we could rent to another government agency, whether it be the county or the state, which often rents space in other parts of the area, because we know we have extra space in there to rent out, and try and generate some revenue from that space. And I would see that as a more fruitful potential than just leaving it open-ended for the next, you know, following our timeline, hoping that some white knight's going to come in and make a miraculous bid for the building, which, which is, just doesn't seem likely, it just seems so remote.
Or proposal, not even a bid. I mean, I would imagine that we wouldn't get millions or anything even close to that.
And I don't even know how you advertise it, and to Barry or the administration department to throw it on the web, I think is almost meaningless.
It is meaningless.
And until you get it into a real, spend real money to advertise and put it out there, I just don't see how it happens. And that means bringing in a firm again to do it.
I don't think it's bringing in a firm.
But I don't think they're qualified to do it.
Then how do you get it done? No, you submit advertisements throughout the country. I mean, you don't necessarily need somebody aggressively-
No, but even if we just advertise-
You need our own staff to do it.
Even if we just advertise in New Jersey, there's a cost to doing it.
Absolutely.
And I don't think that the administration's qualified necessarily to do that whole process. And that's why I just don't want to go down it when it seems so far off-
It's like going down a rabbit hole.
-that we would get it. But I do really think that when it comes time to meet with the architects and going over that space, we really should have a very open mind about that space, keep it down to minimal, and what our potential is for the, for the extra space that we've been told that we have in that building, at least by some. I know some people disagree with that assessment, but we know that we're going, you know, there's potential for extra space. And I know the county has often rented space outside, outside of, you know, and looked for offices in government buildings. And, well, they had one in South Orange at one time, an extra space. And then, and the state has also, and the federal government has also looked for spaces. And I think those are opportunities that we could be, we really be pursuing for other sources of revenue in that building. I don't think a private, you know, person's going to rent in there. I think our only hope is government agencies. And I think that's what we should really be pursuing, to bring in that extra revenue.
And you know what? I think that these type of conversations are really good to have. And I don't doubt that each one of us here want to make the right decision for, on behalf of the residents. I don't doubt that at all. We just disagree. And so, at this point, I think we've had a very robust discussion, and we just need to make a decision and move on.
So at this point, we could either take a straw poll of what people want to do?
Take a straw poll.
Okay.
Now you know where I am.
So, just so that we're clear as far as what we're straw polling, is there-
To reissue the request for expressions of interest or not? Yes.
Okay. Trustee Cullen started off.
I'm not interested.
I'm not?
Not interested.
I don't think it's going to be helpful.
And then you have to get, uh-
I don't think the timing would work out, and it would only end up causing a delay of some kind.
Okay.
All right, I'm outnumbered.
All right. Okay.
Can we, we're going to adjourn now?
We're not going to adjourn.
I'm going to recess.
We're in a recess.
Close session, and then back out again.
Right, reconvene into executive session. You should, I think, entertain another motion to reconvene into an executive session, Third and Valley Rescue Squad relocation, contract negotiation, attorney-client privilege, and also to announce that we will reconvene in open and may take action.
Okay.
Okay. So that was a great motion. You could be trustee for a day?
Yeah, just say what he said.
The motion is to go, is to recess into closed session to discuss that one resolution, 2014-053. That was it, right?
Correct.
And to, and for the board to then reconvene back into open session after the closed session. Do you want to put a time limit on the closed session? So-
Yeah, two hours.
I heard six, like, over two hours. You want to say 30 minutes, just so that you could say-
I always say that we have to put 30 minutes total.
Just, okay. Reconvene no later than 11:15.
No later than 11:15. No later than 11:15.
And that we might take action when we get out.
And that there may be action taken at that.
If the public wants to stick around.
They know you want.
All right, so I need a vote.
Did you bring some money?
I move before me, second. Second in by Trustee Rosner, all in favor. Any opposed? Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you.
Oh, boy.